Good evening, would you like to call the meeting to order?
Good evening. These hearings are being held in accordance with Chapter 40 of the Newcastle County Code that will be jointly conducted by the Newcastle County Department of Land Use and the Newcastle County Planning Board. My name is Valerie Cardelano, co-chair of the public hearing representing the Department of Land Use. Other members of the department here this evening include George Hagerty, Assistant General Manager, Cambeary, Matthew Rogers, Anthony Sikowski. The co-chair representing the planning board is Richard Killingsworth. Other board members here this evening include Sandra Anderson, William McGlinchey, David Shepherd, Robert Snowden, Ruth Dispartis, and Dr. Wilson. The purpose of these hearings is to compile a record of relevant information. Following the reading of each agenda item, the Department of Land Use will present some background information on the applicant. Then the applicant and their representatives will make a presentation not to exceed the total of fifteen minutes. Planning board members may ask questions of the applicant at this time. Public will then be invited to speak in the following order: those who wish to speak in favor, those who wish to speak in opposition, and those who wish to offer general comments. Speakers are encouraged to be brief and to avoid repetition. So that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, all speakers are limited to ten minutes. Any speaker may ask the board to hold the record open for submission of written testimony if the time limit is not sufficient for their needs. For rezoning applications only, the public record will be held open for submission of written comments for an additional thirty calendar days following the public hearing. Speakers are not permitted to debate the applicant but may ask questions that the applicant may choose to answer during his rebuttal opportunities. Open questions relevant to the application will be addressed in the department's recommendation report. All testimony that is recorded and transcribed, therefore all speakers must use the microphone at the speaker's podium and sign the register sheet. Testimony should be preceded by the speaker's name, address, and organization affiliation, if any. No recommendations or decisions will be made by the department or the planning board at these hearings tonight. Recommendations and decisions for each application will be made at a public business meeting without later disposal and will be transmitted to county council for later consideration and action. Opposition to the night's agenda and summary of standards for each application type are located at the entrance to the room.
Before we proceed into the agenda, board and public who are here this evening, I do want to have a point of observation that this meeting beyond the normal transcripts of being written and audio taped will also be videotaped by a member of the public. Just want to make note of that. And any comments from the board? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chairman, this is somewhat unprecedented. Can the members of public just videotape and identify themselves and state the purpose of videotaping the meeting?
Yes. Just identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Councilman Bob Weiner and I'm videotaping the meeting tonight.
As a member of county council, as a private citizen, what, Mr. Weiner?
Both. My citizenship's rights are no greater or lesser than anyone else's.
What's the purpose of videotaping the meeting as opposed to the standard routine we've had for years?
Well, it's a matter of freedom of speech and freedom of the press protected by the United States Constitution.
Certainly not mine.
Okay, so from this point, all right, you've expressed the reason you want to do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I formally object.
So noted.
I'd like to know what the ultimate use of the tape is going to be.
So, the public does, in my review of Mr. Weiner's request earlier, I had counsel review this, and based on my feedback and what the public's entitled to do, which is they're entitled to record this meeting either in written note, in audio, or in video. I see nothing that would prohibit videotaping to occur from tonight.
Okay, and I'll ask for a third time. What will be the ultimate use of the video?
I'm not certain of that.
On that basis, I formally object. I don't intend to appear in somebody's campaign letter.
So noted.
I don't intend it to be used for ulterior purposes whatsoever.
So noted.
I certainly respect the public's right to videotape it, ask questions, do whatever. I think it's another form of intimidation, Mr. Chairman. The average person comes before this committee is the only level of, or this board, excuse me, it's the only level of opportunity a lot of people have to face government one-on-one. You've heard them as well as I do, and I can certainly understand their position, that they come before the microphone and they stammer around a little bit and they're not too sure where they're at or who to speak to or who to address or whatever. Now we're going to further intimidate them by videotaping them. I think it's a travesty, flat-out travesty, and I don't think people should automatically be forced to be videotaped simply because they finally got, and I don't mean to be low-key, but finally got up the nerve to come and speak again for or against an issue that faces them as citizens of Newcastle County.
So noted, Mr. Wilson.
And again, I want it on the formal record that I formally object to be videotaped for unknown purposes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I object as well.
I also.
Okay, so noted. Mr. McGlinchey, Mr. Dispartis also object. Okay. And that will be on the record. All right.
One final question, Mr. Chairman. I should have stated at the beginning, is the whole meeting being taped or just some portions of the meeting?
From my understanding, it will be the entire meeting.
Was there some reason we all weren't informed about this in advance?
I just got information I needed a minute before this meeting occurred.
That's sufficient reason for giving up the informants, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, with that said, I would like to continue all with the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is Application 2013-856-S, West Side Cedar Lane Road, South of Boyd's Corner Road. Exploratory major land development plan plus review for Northeast Christian Church proposes to develop the site with a 27,000-square-foot two-story church, 3,000-square-foot pavilion, and to relocate and renovate the 6,000-square-foot historic house on 22 acres. This is a suburban zoning district located in Council District 12. Anthony Sikowski, Department of Land Use Planner, will make some brief background remarks.
Good evening, Chairman Killingsworth, board members. My name is Anthony Sikowski. Is it on? Oh, no, it's not. Sure. My name is Anthony Sikowski. I'm a planner with the Newcastle County Department of Land Use. Here this evening to present the, I've already got ahead of myself a little bit, present the plan for the Northeast Christian Church, which is the first item on the agenda this evening. It's a nearly thirty-acre parcel located on the west side of Cedar Lane. As you can see here on the plate, Cedar Lane is south of Boyd's Corner Road, referred to also as 896, and then kind of situated, you can see in the small location map, between Summit Bridge Road and Route 13, kind of centrally there. Bayberry South is just to the east of the parcel, and they also, Bayberry North is in close proximity to the site. As you can see on the aerial photo, the site joins the, it's the Alfred Water Middle School and Cedar Lane Elementary School just to the north parcel. The property outlined in light blue there is agricultural use currently and contains an existing vacant dwelling. The applicant proposes to utilize the site, and actually just kind of the rear portion of the site, as you can see on the smaller inset, it's set back substantially, but they intend to propose a 27,000-square-foot church, two-story church down on the lower corner, a pavilion, the upper portion there, and then associated parking facilities and store owner management that goes along with that. They intend to relocate the existing dwelling, it's kind of in the area where the church is going to be located, situated just north of it, to the northerly side of the parking lot. You can see the dwelling in that location. The dwelling on the property is historic structure. It shows up on the Pomeran and Beers Atlas, this dwelling on 1868 maps. I don't have the date of the exact, the circuit for it, but dates direct to at least that point. The applicant may have a little more information on that. But the church after relocating, it intends to utilize it as an accessory structure for the church, either offices or something, something like that with the building. The plus comments from the State Historic Preservation Office encourage the preservation and reuse of the house on their development plans. It's a little dark, but, so based on the traffic data that was submitted for the proposal and the church of this size, Land Use Department has determined that this would require a traffic impact study. Deltot has indicated in their plus review that they would encourage the applicant to participate in the Traffic Improvement District for this as part of Southern Newcastle County. That's my understanding, that the study hasn't been completed yet, but that it would be an opportunity to go through the process to look into that. I'm just going to go back real quick. Between the school and this site, there's another parcel that comes back, and that's, they're going to, this site will share a access point with the proposed MOT charter school, which is about 100,000 square foot high school that's gone in there. So you can kind of see the curved property line on the north side of this site will be a shared access point for both of those facilities. For resources, the property is located in a water resource protection area. The applicant is going to demonstrate compliance with the protection standards and reforestation with the recharge area. Nearly ninety percent of the site, I think eighty-seven percent, will remain an open space. That's all I have for you this evening. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I'll open up the board. If you can go to the parcel site map there, right there.
Okay.
So the property adjacent to the north side is where MOT charter is going, and where the connection point's going to be?
Sure. Oh, we have a blinking, a strobe version of it. So the MOT charter school parcel comes straight back on the north side here. The access will actually follow the property line into the site, and then the remaining portion will be a vacant parcel. So it's actually three parcels total.
Shared parking lot and driveway entrance?
Just shared driveway. They each have their own parking facilities currently.
Other questions from the board? Ms. Anderson?
Would you please repeat what you said about the historic house is going to be relocated and what will be used to be?
Sure.
What did the historic department determine about it?
My battery may have died. Can I hit that manually? Go to the site plan. So the historic house is, I don't know if my microphone, it's currently located right here. It's going to be pushed to the north of the parking facilities, you can see up there, and it's intended just to be an accessory use to the church, either office use or something specific to the church itself. The Office of State Planning has commented on it as part of their plus review and has encouraged the reuse of the dwelling itself. The applicant will be required to go through the historic review board as part of the county review. They have not done that at this time. So we don't, we do not have comments from them as to the appropriateness of relocating the structure. I'm sure they would encourage preservation, but for the setting of moving it and the parking facility surrounding it, we do not have comments on that at this time from the HRB.
But it will be reused?
That's the intent.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Dispartis?
Just more for curiosity, if the house is capable of being moved without?
Maybe a better question for the applicant when they present.
That's what would be important to start, the house is capable of being moved?
That is my understanding from discussions with the applicant, that they've already investigated the feasibility of that.
Other questions? Hearing and seeing done? Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
If I invite members of the public who are in favor? Applicant?
My name's Richard Wooden. I'm with Wooden and Associates Consulting Engineers and Land Planners. We've been hired by the applicant for this project, applicant being Northeast Christian Church. I think Anthony did a pretty good presentation. If there's any particular questions, I may be able to assist him in answering those questions.
My question about the house?
Yes. We did investigate the ability to move the house. It's being moved approximately 175 feet over, and the house movers that we talked to said they can move the brick structure. The addition to the back is in disrepair, that'll come off, but we would plan to replace it with a new addition. And we'll get all-new renovation, be taken down to the interior building studs, and all-new electric, and everything would be brought up to code.
What is clarification, we said 175 feet, 10 yards? It just looks like there's a considerable difference here, it's laid out. Structure is currently situated to where?
The, each parking bay is 60 feet wide, so I'm looking at approximately one, two, two and a half parking bays over, so that's about 175 feet. The idea was to put it closer to the access road so it's more visible, more prominent. It's still be set back off Cedar Lane Road about 750 feet, so it'll still dominate a view shed. So the idea is to display it, show it, but also use it for administrative office. We're not trying to tuck it behind something. We wanted to, we didn't want to see a parking lot in front of it either. We wanted to kind of have the building have its own little front yard and a nice vista from the roadway.
Is that showing 175 feet?
Once again, going by each parking bay from parking stall to back of parking stall, 60 feet, and I'm looking at one, two, two and a half. I don't have a scale on me, but I'm pretty sure it's 175 feet.
Question out of curiosity on the parking lots, why there wouldn't be a shared opportunity for a parking lot with the school?
The MOT Charter High School did come before the Board of Adjustment for a parking reduction to reduce some previous coverage, and one of the positions created was they knew the Northeast Christian Church was planning to construct a facility, so they do feel that they will have an internal agreement to share parking, but they wanted to demonstrate that they could, if they had a function at the same time, that they each could have enough parking. But certainly with overflow parking, that was the idea behind a common entrance, instead of having multiple entrances on the road, have a shared access road, they would enter into a cross-access easement agreement, and that they each would have their own parking, but special occasions, they already talked about, you know, using each other's facilities for certain events.
Other questions of the board? Thank you. All right, jumped the gun last time. Let's go back out to the public. Those in favor, please come to the table. Hearing and seeing done, those opposed? Hearing and seeing done, those for general comments. Okay, we can move on to the next.
Thank you.
Application 2013-105-SZ, West Side McKenna's Church Road, South of Oak Ridge Road, and north of Thomas Point and McKean High School. Exploratory major land development plan rezoning and plus review for West Hampton proposes to consolidate two parcels and to rezone the area to ST to develop the site to 24 semi-depatched dwellings, 71 townhouses, and maintaining the existing historic single-family home. Order 13-101 will rezone 40.72 acres from suburban to suburban transition. This is Council District 3. I just want to note that since this is a rezoning application, the public record will be held open for an additional thirty days beyond the day of this hearing. That will hold the record open through January fifth, through, excuse me, through June fifth, 2014. We'll begin by hearing from Steve Fox, Department of Land Use Planner, supervisor of master administration of the project.
Good evening, Chairman Killingsworth and board members. My name's Steve Fox. I'm the planner from the Newcastle County Land Use Department, and I'm responsible for reviewing this plan, making sure it complies with the Unified Development Code. Okay, so this plan is at the exploratory sketch plan level, and it proposes a rezoning from the suburban zoning district that it currently is to a suburban transition. This is just a snapshot of the site plan, a little bit fuzzy, but planning board members should have been provided with a copy of this. It's an aerial photograph showing the overall big picture. You can see that West Hampton site, which is a 40.72-acre parcel of land, it's actually two tax parcels, one, two, surrounded by existing development of single-family homes. They're all listed up here. It's surround, it abuts the north side of the McKean High School, and it's going to take access off of McKenna's Church Road, although it does abut the Oak Ridge Road to the north in Oakwood Hills, as well as Riblet Lane and Dogwood Farms. But Deltot has weighed in on this as well as the Department of Land Use, and it's our opinion that the access off of McKenna's Church Road is the most appropriate, and then for if we feel it's really not practical for access to be provided through either of those other two roads. This is just a photograph of the view of it from McKenna's Church Road. The house there is referred to as the J. Crossen Estate. I believe it dates back to sometime in the 1800s. The applicant is proposing to shift its location, actually lift it up and move it several feet back in order to make a room for the entrance road. And as with the last application, I don't know if it's been determined yet the exact feasibility. The applicant will address that when he comes up. This is a very basic statistics about what's been, the existing site. It is 40.72 acres. It's currently zoned suburban. One house on it. It's got steep slopes, not really severely steep, but precautionary steep slopes, which are up to 15%, or 15 to 25%. Flood plain of Hyde Run, wetlands repairing buffer, young mature forest. This is what the plan proposes. Proposing 96 proposed residential lots, 71 townhouses, 24 twins, and the one existing single-family historic house. There's 66.2% open space is provided. Most of the open space is provided in order to preserve the natural resources that are listed at the bottom, and it is in full compliance with the Unified Development Code. The density is 2.35 dwellings per acre. The next couple of slides are intended to provide a comparison between what could occur under the current zoning and what's proposed under the ST zoning. So basically, what all that translates to is the calculation that will be done for what could be done today would be 50 single-family lots, and they could be as small as 6,500 square feet, and it would be required to be 50% of the site would be open space. In fact, actually more of the site would be open space because of the extent of the natural resources. But the bottom line is 50 single-family lots would be permitted there today. So picture of the current zoning map with the surrounding zoning. You can see the current property in the middle is zoned S suburban, as well as the high school to the south. The NC 21, the term NC, or the abbreviation NC stands for Neighborhood Conservation. It's a term that basically means an existing subdivided area, and the number represents the square feet. So that's, NC 21 is a 21,000-square-foot minimum lot size, or in other words, a half-acre minimum lot size. The NC 10 is 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size, single-family detached. The NC PUD is Neighborhood Conservation Planned Unit Development. So essentially, mostly everything you can see is all single-family detached lots. There's a couple of exceptions a little bit further out on another slide. So in comparison to the 50 single-family lots that could be done under the S zoning, the applicant's proposing to rezone to suburban transition, and that would allow what he's proposing. In fact, by calculation, they would be able to get 128 lots, providing they could come up with a design to physically fit them, which certainly could happen. So by calculation, 128 attached lots, and that would be a combination of just simply apartment, I mean, it could be apartments, it could be townhouses, twins, or any number of other kinds of lots. But they're proposing 96 attached dwellings. The densities, I really wanted to put this one up first. These are a little bit approximate, but they're fairly accurate. You can see the various numbers, and what those numbers represent are the number of dwelling units per acre in the various subdivisions in an approximately one acre, one mile radius surrounding the site. As you can see, most of the subdivisions are single-family detached with a couple of exceptions. Down here in the south is Castle Shire with 4.19 dwellings per acre. Mara's Landing is a workforce housing development of 2.55 dwellings per acre. Those are the two townhouse developments we observed. Coffee Run or condominiums, that's 15.13. But otherwise, I believe everything else is single-family detached, but it's probably worth noting that many of these subdivisions were developed a long time ago when there was no open space requirement. So the West Hampton, while at 2.35 dwellings per acre, will have 66% of the land as open space, and, you know, a number of these subdivisions with the lower densities have no open space. These are some of the issues that are already resolved, which is often unusual at this level, but traffic impact study's already been conducted and approved by Deltot, and they found nine different intersections. They evaluated that they all function at acceptable levels of service, many of them at level of service A, most at B, a couple at C. Wetlands, there's a very small amount of wetlands, mostly associated with a stream called Hyde Run that runs along the front of the property that would be completely in the open space. The wetlands extend up along a very small tributary, and the applicant has already gone to the Corps of Engineers and got authorization to cross those wetlands with the entrance street. And I mentioned the entrance location before, although it's not set in stone because we're early in the process, Deltot has weighed in and they're comfortable with what they're proposing. This and the next slide are provided by the applicant just as examples of what they envision in the way of elevations. And that's what I have. That's intended for just the factual information, not necessarily an endorsement or position regarding the application. Any, if anyone has had any questions?
Questions from the board, Ms. Anderson?
Regarding the entrance to the development, I do some houses, there's a lot of houses, I can't tell how many lanes of traffic are allowing the entrance to be doubled each way. That's a lot of traffic.
At this point, the plan shows a, just a one in and a one out. Technically, by code, at least the Newcastle County's, not necessarily Deltot's regulation, but the Unified Development Code requires that if you have 300 or more lots, you're supposed to have two points of access if you physically can. They also want you to have a boulevard divided entrance if you have 150 lots or more, and this has 96. And this has 96.
Still do you have any?
It's, it could be rights out and right, lefts in, you know, it really, the exact design of that entrance, I don't believe has been designed yet, so.
I hope the county encourages them to make it a boulevard, there's plenty of access for, for safety.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the board?
Okay, thank you.
For the record, my name is Sean Tucker, I represent the applicant this evening, Blenheim Homes. If I may, just take a moment to set up our board. We also brought a PowerPoint presentation, it seems to be a popular approach now, I think it actually makes for a better presentation to the public and we're happy to provide our own as well. I have some draft deed restrictions, if I may Chairman, hand out to the Board Members that we have worked closely with the community in putting together. And I'll walk you through them, at least in bullet point, as we travel through the PowerPoint Just by way of some brief background, many of you know Jason Etche, who's the owner of Blenheim Homes, he's here this evening. Blenheim Homes has been building homes in Newcastle County for over three decades. They build predominantly in the Delmarva area, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and Maryland. They have built over 3,000 homes since they've been in business, just by way of track record. I think Blenheim is well-known by members of the Planning Board and by the public for building really a, not only a mixture of housing types in Newcastle County, but also high-quality housing in Newcastle County. Just a quick run-through, six active projects that Blenheim is currently working on, some of them you may recognize and be familiar with. A total of about 30 projects completed in the past three decades. Home Builder Awards as well, again, it's nice to have a client like Blenheim when you have somebody, again, with a track record with the community and the county for doing high-quality work. And Mr. Fox had provided a couple of examples that we provided the Department and we included a few as well. These are existing communities that Mr. Sinetscha has built or is in the process of building, just to give you an idea of the quality of the architecture and the homes that he is fairly well-known for constructing in Newcastle County and surrounding sister states. The name, of course, is at the bottom of each slide if you're interested. This is actually one from Pennsylvania, too far over the border, here's another one. North Point is pretty well-known, there's a few folks in the Department, I believe, that live in North Point. Here's a twin. Now, this is not the plan we're building, some of you may recognize this from long ago. This is a plan that Mr. Chernow had originally, had approved on this property and I just wanted to show it briefly to give you a flavor for what almost happened here, but did not happen here. This is a plan that was approved under the old code, there was some litigation involved in this plan, as I understand it, for over 300 apartments. This plan has expired, could not be built today, and my client has purchased the property from Mr. Chernow in fee simple. This is not something under an option contract. So we go from just over 300 units under the old code, and I mention that also because a lot of folks, I think, don't appreciate the difference in many ways between the UDC and the old code and the significant layers of protection now for environmental constraints and other factors that you have to protect against in the new code. This is the difference between, before Ms. Anderson remembers, because she was on the board under the old code, this is really the difference you get between these two codes when you have environmental constraints in particular. Now, this plan, this is also not the plan in front of you, but this was the initial plan that was submitted to the county probably over a year ago, that showed 105 units, give or take, under the workforce housing option. This was the plan that was originally submitted, which was a permissible plan under the S zoning, you could do twins, you could do towns, you could do apartments, Mr. Sinetscha wasn't proposing any apartments however. In working with the community, and I'm going to drill down into this a little bit over the past year, and our neighbors, and with the Department and with the administration, I'm happy to say that we, and through the deed restrictions that we'll talk a little bit about, I'm happy to say we've reached this plan. And this is the plan that's before you today. And let me talk about it a little bit, Mr. Fox did a nice job of the overview, but some details that, just want to quickly point out that might not stick out initially, but I'm familiar with because of all of our meetings and changes. I'm going to grab my laser pointer here, bear with me. Some of the things on this plan that came about through significant public input and hard work, first of all, this road here has been shifted in such a way to balance protecting a natural resource here in repair and buffers with it being too close to this neighborhood, it's been shifted as far away from the neighborhood as we could shift it, this is Thomas Point, by the way, some folks are here from Thomas Point to talk about that. Without intruding too far into this, into this repair and buffer area, the historic house is being preserved, we have confirmed that it is feasible to move it, it's being moved only a few feet and it's oriented appropriately towards the road coming in, that's what's driving the moving of that, of that house. There's also landscaping, and this is in the deed restrictions or the restrictive covenants, that's been significantly beefed up in this area to buffer these lots in particular in Thomas Point from this roadway. Ms. Anderson, I know, brought up a valid concern about this access point and its width. We really, at this stage, don't want to go wider because we are sort of pinched here because of this environmental constraint, particularly on the north side of the plan. We certainly are happy to work with the Department and alternative ideas and members of the Board, and I'll let Mr. Sinetscha weigh in and Mr. Sidron, maybe what some other options are there, but we'd want also obviously work closely with the community that's here tonight that we've been working with for over a year on this design. Some other quick points, a lot of the spacing that you see between the units was driven by neighborhood concerns. This trail right here that leads to the existing high school was something that the neighbors were very sensitive to, its location and how many connection points. The location of the open space was something we worked through carefully with the Department that changed from the earlier plans, it had originally been located here. There's also a significant amount of beefed-up landscaping on this border here with our neighbors to the north, as well as fencing. So I just want to give a quick sort of breakout or bullet point of some of the changes from the original plan that went in to the current plan that's before you this evening, and I'll talk about some more details in the deed restrictions that carve out other special exceptions for this project that go beyond the code. Of course, when considering a rezoning, the Planning Board and the Department are required to look at several factors in the UDC. The first is consistency with the Comprehensive Development Plan, and if you satisfy A, as you all know, you jump to D and E in the, in the, in the sort of checklist that you go through. And I'm going to walk through the factors that we believe demonstrate this plan and application are consistent with the comp plan justifying a rezoning, and then I'll jump to the, to the factor D and E, because B and C will not apply if A is satisfied, and we think we clearly satisfy, satisfy that. First, the proposed rezoning is consistent with quote "low residential density." For those that are very familiar with the Comprehensive Plan, low residential density is a defined term, it's one to three to use per acre is considered low residential density in the code. This area is earmarked for low residential density, so the maximum is three, we are below that, as Mr. Fox indicated. I think our slide shows 2.33 to use per acre, he's at about, I think, 2.35. I think the difference is, we didn't include the historic home in the calculation and Mr. Fox did, I think that's the difference in the number, a minor difference in the number. Infill, as you know, is encouraged in developed areas, this is a developed area, and as greater detail, as you probably know in my letter of April 25th, where I actually break down into each one of these, I attach citations out of the Comprehensive Development Plan, I attach the sections of the Comprehensive Plan, and even highlight the language in yellow just to, to make it as user-friendly as possible, but I'm trying to hit the bullet points tonight in my, my limited time that Mr. Berry is clocking me on as I look over. West Hampton is consistent with the growth patterns and styles in the area. Now, Mr. Fox is correct that our immediate neighbors, mostly single-family detached, but as you bubble out in the Pike Creek and Hockeston area, you see many examples, and I'm going to go forward a little bit to show you this, we're a little bit out of order. If you actually go out into a three-mile ring, you get up to 37 different communities that are, this is part of the package, where you've got, these are towns, twins, condos. So you see this, this flavor, it's more the newer housing than the older, but Menin Hall Village is older, so even some of the older communities, and I think Menin Hall Village is an excellent example of mixed unit type. You see the towns, the twins, and even condos and apartments. Let me just go back here if I may. This slide, I just wanted to touch on briefly, in the packet I provided, we referred to this as a level one area, it's actually a level one and a level two area in the state investment map. I sent a letter clarifying that today to the county and also to you, you may have not seen it yet. When our engineer originally looked at the map in the comp plan under its very small scale, it looked like it was all, all red, but actually it's level one and level two, mostly level two, which is the orange. For purposes of the application, it doesn't change the legal analysis, both level one and level two areas, as you probably know, are areas the state has earmarked for state investment, for infrastructure, and for a wide, and this is right out of the state's plan, a wide range of densities. So even higher density, not just low density, but higher densities are recognized by the state as acceptable in a level one and a level two area, we're well within those ranges. This is a map similar to Mr. Fox's, what we did was, as the Department did, we identified the recorded major plans in the area and showed their densities, and the average density, I think we came up with, was around 2.38, and we're just below that, but it gives you a flavor for what the average density is in the area and how we're, we're trying to stay within the spirit of that, and certainly on the lower side of that, of that mean. Also, as Mr. Fox had mentioned, open space, you don't see a lot of open space in these existing communities despite their, their densities. That's because most are more constructed under the older code, where you didn't have high open space requirements. We're over 60 percent open space. In fact, 66.2 percent open space, if you do the math. Significant amount of open space, I know you folks see plans all the time, and you might see 50, 55, 66 percent is probably one of the higher open space plans I've been involved with in the past 15 years. The open space is also connected to the school, you can see that a little bit better here, I'll refer to the, the old-fashioned way, the manual board, see that connection Comp plan talks about best management practices being encouraged for consistency with the comp plan, Mr. Sidron has designed stormwater management and has implemented a lot of the green technology practices that are encouraged by the county, the state, and mentioned in the comp plan, that's been implemented here. Historic preservation, the house in particular, some outbuildings that we will be seeking to demolish, but the, the house, the main house, the historic house that was mentioned by Mr. Fox is being preserved. And there's a picture of it right here. This outbuilding here, and I think there's another smaller one, will be proposed for demolition in front of the Historic Review Board shortly. Now, as you know, there's a process by, after you submit a demolition permit, within nine months, you're allowed to demolish, we've submitted no demolition permits. This could have been demolished during the period that we've been working with the community, not the way we do things, that was the community wanted to sense how they felt about the house, and it was mixed feelings, some wanted to see it preserved, others, I think, were sort of indifferent. We've decided to preserve it. Another comp plan requirement, facilitate housing and community choices for all stages of life and income, that is a quote out of the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan talks about the largest population gain is projected at ages 55 to 74. Empty nester is becoming a common phrase in Newcastle County, and in particular in this area of Newcastle County. The projections, again, this is right out of the Comprehensive Plan, the pinpoint sites are in the, in the letter that I provided, projections suggest significant future demand for smaller homes. A lot of the empty nesters don't want the lawn maintenance, don't want the larger lots, don't want the cost of maintaining the, the larger home with energy costs, et cetera. And as a function of that, and again, I'm just referring to the comp plan, the projection is you're going to have maybe an excess of single-family detached because of this move towards, toward smaller homes. And, and the comp plan encourages, again, trying to fill that void that's anticipated.
You have just a little under two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, I'll speed this up. Suitability of the property, again, you can see, I'll refer over to the plan that Mr. Sidron put up, you get a sense for how well this does lay out. We do not need any variances for this plan that you see, so the plan does fit very well with the property, consistent with the requirements, legal standards in the UDC. Let me jump into the community interaction, because I think that's equally as important as the legal standards. These are the communities that we have met with, in particular, Oakwood Hills, Quail Ridge, the Riblet Lane folks, Thomas Point. This was kicked off by a meeting with GATA, which of course is the larger umbrella group in the area, in the Hockeston area, everybody's heard of GATA. They advertised this project, we met with GATA, a working group was formed, it was a healthy working group, I would say we had about 25 people, some of which are here tonight that you're going to hear from. We met over a dozen times over the past year, and, you know, I always like to think we've reached out to everybody, hopefully we've, we've gotten them all, I, there's always somebody that might show up and say, I've never heard anything about this, well, I just wanted the Board to know and the Department, we've tried our best to reach out to folks in the area. I'm happy to tell you the working group made up of these neighbors in particular, and the hussies actually, who in a lot here, some of you may know the hussies, have voted to support this project that's been presented this evening with the restrictions.
And Sean, you need to wrap up.
Okay. And here's the declaration of restrictions that's in front of you, and I'll just run through it just real quick, maybe 30 seconds, and then I'll, I'll conclude, Mr. Berry. If you take a look at that, I'll just point out a couple of things that you probably haven't seen in other projects. There is tens of thousands of dollars being spent by my client to address particular concerns from Thomas Point about traffic along McKennan's, even though our traffic impact study passes, meets or exceeds the minimum standards more than, lowest we are, Ms. Anderson, level service C, we're not even D anyplace. We still agree to do significant expansion to create in particular a stacking lane for folks who currently come into Thomas Point but don't have a stacking lane, which is dangerous for them. So we're, my client's adding that as part of this, not required by Del Doc, not required by the county, but it's something the community wanted, it's something that we're doing. There's also, and I'll wrap up here.
You really need to wrap it up now.
Okay, okay, with that, I'll conclude, Chairman, thank you.
Members, questions from the Board?
Just a question about the water resource, that is all squared away with the, the steep slopes and the floodplain and all that, everything is okay?
Yes, yes, that has been looked at thoroughly, and that's, that's driving some of the large amounts of open space, quite frankly, because of those restrictions. But the wetlands permits and the core permits have all been obtained, and we actually did a special EIA report for the county, which is mentioned in some of the, in some of the notes, just to study that, Duffield was involved in that.
So it's all accepted?
Yes, it's all accepted and no variances are required. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Other questions from the Board? Hearing and seeing none, public, those in favor, please line up over here and sign in, please. Actually, it's going to the point in directly, and sign in after. For those opposed, if you can begin signing in. For those opposed, if you can begin signing in, please state your name and where you're from.
My name's Richard Ford, and I'm a resident of Quail Ridge, which is the development to the north of the planned development. And what I want to say, we've been working with the developer for over a year, and it's been very cordial, and he's listened to all of our concerns. The original plan, we were most concerned about was the having an entrance back up through this neighborhood here, and there was even talk at one time about putting an entrance back onto Riblet Lane. That would have been devastating for us, I think, for a lot of the residents. So, we're very happy to see a development with only one access point onto Church Road over there. My property is the property right here, which is one of the closest and probably one of the most impacted by this development. And we've been working, as stated, to increase the landscaping in this area, you know, with, to provide some barriers. We've also been working on eliminating some of the street lighting, so we're not impacted by the lighting of this development, and several other things. So, we're, we were obviously upset to see this property that was our backyard woodlands now being developed, but we're certainly happy that it's not apartments in a rental community. And we think that, based on working with Blenheim and the quality of the homes, that we're content with this development as it's planned. Thank you.
Based on your conversations with the developer on issues around tree canopy and lighting, are those going favorably?
Yes. We've actually, in the deed restrictions, we were concerned about when the landscaping would be installed. We wanted to have it in as soon as possible to give it time to mature. So, in the deed restrictions, as soon as the base coat is put on the road, that is when the landscaping will be installed, and that is in the proposed deed restrictions.
Good questions from the board? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shepherd, please. Didn't see your hand go up there.
I put it up late. So, my apologies. Sir, out of curiosity, as you've mentioned, you've been working with Blenheim to try to design the development in a way which was favorable to you and other residents in the community. Are there any aspects of it that you would like to see different than what's currently proposed, would be an improvement upon from your perspective?
The, we did, you know, I asked the question about moving, to move this road further down into the development, but there is a lot of mature forests, you know, and woodland in this property, and this is, much of the younger forest is closer to my property. There's a lot of vines, there's a lot of, it's not, it's not a very attractive woodland. So, I'm acceptance, accepting the fact that, you know, the road is in the right place, based on the grades and the existing woodland. We are going to have a, we've agreed to have a meeting, if this project continues, with the landscaper and with the ground clearing contractor, onsite meeting to talk about exactly what of the vines and the butch stuff, the bad stuff gets pulled out, and obviously, we're going to leave all of the existing trees. But there was some question about, we don't necessarily want to go through all of the open area and pull out all of the, you know, everything. We want to be, but there are some areas that need to be done. So, we're going to do that as onsite. We're comfortable with that.
Two quick additional questions real quick. Your community, all the single-family homes?
Yes.
Okay. And is your point of ingress and egress on McKennan's Church Road?
No. It is, it is up off of Graves Road, single access point off of Graves Road. We have a Hoquetson address. We're very happy with that.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we go to oppositions, we'll make sure that any others in favor?
In favor?
In favor? Please. Just state your name and where you're from for the record.
Sure. My name is Elsa Brining. I live at 400 Riblet Lane, which is right down here, and I just brought some of the information at some of these meetings we've been at for over a year. Everything that we suggested that could be done, that the residents, that the neighbors wanted, was done. Everything we suggested. Now, if there was a, a problem with some of the, oh, by the way, Steve Fox is the best guy to contact if you have any questions about anything. I've got to, I'm so happy to meet him in person, so on the phone. If there was anything we wanted done, they tried to do it, they addressed it, they didn't just sweep it under the rug. It might have been that that was a place that had to have, like, water drainage, so they couldn't move it there, or there's all, or they wanted to have access to the school for, so they left that there. But, but I don't know, I don't want to repeat what was said, and I know I'm sort of just speaking off the cuff, but everybody would like to see forest forever, but it's not going to happen, and we could not have asked for more cooperation from the builder and the people that he works with. So, I just wanted to, to show up tonight to say that.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Let me speak.
And just want to make sure, any, you're in favor? Okay, great.
Hi, Mark Flake, Vice President of GATA Land Juice. And Mr. Tucker's almost right. I like to point that out when I can. It's been over a year, almost a year and a half. We started in January of 2013, and there were 175 people at the first series of meetings. It was the largest focus group we've ever run. We had to break it into four, so my wife was thrilled. She got rid of me every two weeks for a couple of nights. But every single neighborhood, we did meet with, and from those 175 people, we got down to working groups for each neighborhood to represent all of them and sort of got down to that group of 25 or so that worked on the deed restrictions. And again, this is one of the most comprehensive sets of deed restrictions we've ever done, and Mr. Tucker's printer must be broken because he's printed this out probably a few hundred times now for everybody. So, we're very thankful that the community was listened to. The limit of disturbance is significant here as far as the areas that aren't going to be touched, but even from that, to the point that was made earlier, there's some old invasive growth vines that are in here, in the mature forest along the periphery, and they're actually going to go in with the forester and the landscaper, Mr. Sessions, is going to go in there and actually clean that out with the residents and point to that, so we can save as much of that existing mature forest. The landscape density is much more than county code requires. We always joke, we like code plus. This is code plus plus. This is so much better than what we could have gotten if we just had the code. And to be blunt, the developer really didn't have to come before the community. They always open themselves up to that scrutiny, and they were very magnanimous. They met with us. Mr. Shinetscha attended almost every meeting but one, and I think that was the night of his wife's birthday. They didn't show up for the one, so we kind of forgave him on that. The lighting issues and the Del Dot access point for Thomas Point was a very serious issue. It was something that could not be done ever under Del Dot auspices unless this developer decided to do it. Thomas Point is only 35 homes. They would not be able to qualify for D cell and turn lanes. The developer, at significant cost, agreed to do that as part of the road improvements they're already going to have to do anyway. That alone right there is a huge, huge safety improvement for that neighborhood, and that is going to make that neighborhood much safer to get in and out of. As well as that, the signage that's going to identify the new West Hampton project will be prominent enough, yet set back according to codes, so that people won't be turning into Thomas Point, which was another concern. They might be confused as they go out there. That's not a very big neighborhood, and added traffic would be a problem. So, from that standpoint, we've had a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion. Everything was listened to. Elsa made a comment. One of the things that even, I think it was two weeks ago, we met, this little thing right here of moving these number of homes to split them evenly around the pathway was something that she had asked for, and then they sent through the preliminary plan, and it had been done. I got an email from Elsa, and she said, "I can't believe they even listened to us up to the very last meeting," which was sort of just a presentation. So, to that, we thank Mr. Shinetscha and Mr. Sidron for doing that, because that was just the last aspect that was asked for, just even out the balance of the homes, so that this walking path would be more central to Thomas McCain. Originally, it was going to be up here further, so it actually shortens the pathway for the people that are going to be living in this development. So, we would ask that you approve this, this plan, this rezoning, and allow this project to go forward. Thank you very much.
Do you have questions from the board? Thank you. Are there any others in favor? Just remember to sign in immediately. State your name and where you're from.
My name's Jeff Benson, and I live in Thomas Point, and I just want to go on record, representing Thomas Point, that we are in favor of this plan. We have met over the year. He has made a lot of changes, the best he could, moving the road, cutting the angle of the road coming into those houses, added extra landscaping, and based on, you know, his rights, I, we really couldn't expect him to do much more. All forward, so I just want to go on record that Thomas Point is in favor of it.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you. Are there others in favor? Just state your name and where you're from for the record.
My name's Edward Hawkins. I'm from Quail Ridge also, and I'm just glad it's going this way, instead of 300 or 400 homes. I know it's a good quality builder, and it's going to be a nice development. I don't want to repeat anything because I think everything else was said, but I just want to support it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you. Just sign in, please. Are there any others in favor? Hearing and seeing done. Those opposed? No. In favor? Yeah, please, sir.
If I may.
Okay. Are there any for opposed, opposition? Those opposed? General comments?
I live directly across from the proposed development. I'm not too concerned about what they do over there, because I know it's been going on for 53 years since I've lived there. However, what I am concerned about is water runoff. I'm not sure how that's determined, when a property is developed, or if any property is developed, say, upside of me. But in the recent storms or after, in the last 53 years, I've seen a significant change in the volume of water, and of course, the stream runs right through my property. So, I was just wondering, when these kind of things are done, if Del Dot takes into consideration the volume of water, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Questions from the board? Oh, you're good. Thank you very much. Rebutts?
Thank you, Chairman.
Is that 30 seconds, please?
Yes, it'll be 30 seconds. Mr. Katlowski's comments, I'm glad to hear that. We, maybe a minute. We did meet with the Corps, and actually, there's going to be some improvements to the stream that cut through the property. And you'll see a slight actual improvement in draining to neighboring properties, plus all the stormwater on our property has to be controlled under code. And lastly, I just want to thank Mr. Fox certainly for working with us on this. Ms. Fogarty has been a real pleasure to meet with and work through issues, and before she was on board, you know, we were able to speak to members of the administration about this project, and they were very interested in what the community wanted and wanted to make sure we were meeting and listening closely with, to the community, and of course, we were doing that. And so, I just want to also thank the county for their efforts in working with us and the community to make this a better plan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could, ask Mr. Tucker one question. You passed out some deed restrictions.
Yes, Mr. Eric.
And deed restriction number five talks about stacking lanes. To begin before third, occupancy of the first home. Number 11 talks about the installation of the first layer blacktop around areas, and number 12 talks about, there are timing issues really. Can you just explain, if you can, or maybe want to address this at a later point in time, how you intend, how you see those actually occurring?
Sure. The Thomas Point roadway improvement, someone had to check, check the deed restrictions. I left them on my chair. Regarding the landscaping, that is triggered by the timing of the first layer of the cadum at certain points in the community. So, when you look at the exhibits that are referenced in the end of that declaration, there's probably seven or eight exhibits, so that we captured this in a, you know, an objective way. Once blacktop, not final, but initial coat goes down at certain points, that will trigger certain landscaping going in. That was something the community wanted, and we understood that, and we put those triggers in there. Regarding Thomas Point, let me just grab those, if I may. Just want to double-check that. Yes, Mr. Hagerty, in regards to the McKennan's improvements that are beyond what Del Dot and the county require, those are required to be in place before the first new home is constructed on the property. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board members.
The next item is Amendment 2014-177T to amend Newcastle County Code, Chapter 40, which is the Unified Development Code or UDC, Article 6, signed regulations regarding electronic variable messaging signs, ordinance 14026, text message, overdue time, best on EDMS sign, 15 minutes from the current 12 hours. Councilman Rata. We'll begin with some initial comments from Councilman Rata, and then we'll hear from Ken Berry, Department of Land Use Planner, before we have additional presentations. Mr. Rata?
Evening. My name's Councilman Joe Rata. I am the sponsor on redoing this ordinance. What prompted me on this was that, for one thing, that this ordinance goes every 12 hours right now, and it is kind of old and in the sense that way we have it right now. There's different businesses right now. For one thing, you have gas stations, which I got gas today. When I was on my way out here, it was changed. That was less than 12 hours. That was within two hours. No one says anything about that. You have a lot of business that have signs, electronic signs, that are rolling right now, and with that...
Okay. I'm trying to make a little bit of fire for you.
Don't bother me. I'm used to, I'm on council. With that, these electronic signs, they're off premises, and the on-premises signs, which are like, are off-premises signs, are billboards, they will not be in this ordinance or any change in this ordinance. They have to stay the way they are because they're on 295, 95, and 495. Now, if you go to Pennsylvania, you'll see these signs, they roll up there. They roll about every 10, 12 seconds. Of course, you're going 60 and over up there. Here, I was asked by a couple people, the Civic Lake for one, to make it two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening, and then in between 15 minutes. Well, I really didn't see any sense in that because if you're in traffic, they were worrying about the traffic, going past it. If you're in traffic, if you're there more than 15 minutes, you're not going anywhere anyway, so you probably can read the book other than the sign. These are, these are really outdated, the way we have them right now, and the standards for EV signs, which are electronic signs, they have to be submitted in lieu of permanent signs, permanent signs, and with the permanent signs or the marquee signs, they can actually change them all day long. These here, you can't. They'll be every 15 minutes. They'll be every 15 minutes. And can't be, can't be located within 75 feet of residences. And 50 square feet, that's the limit on them. Now, personally, on the signs in itself, all the signs, the way we had it, the way we've, we've done it over the past years, I think is, is too much. But, you know, the way we have them now, and where we're going with the signs, I think we ought to update them to where we, we are in standards today. We do everything electronic. We, we have computers. We don't want to do this without computers. Telephones are computers now. So with this, I'd like to submit this, and I'll answer any questions if anybody has any for me.
Councilman, first I want to say thank you for coming in and discussing the application of the amendment. It's a rare opportunity to have a council member here, and one to even come up and present, so thank you for doing that for us tonight. I hope enough are questions from the board. Mr. Shepherd?
Councilman, may I also express my appreciation for you coming tonight and presenting to us. I'm, in asking this question, I am not expecting you to be an expert on legislative history. So I would say the disclaimer is answer my question if you can, but do you know what the logic behind the original regulation was in terms of restricting the change of signage on, in situations much like it is displayed in the picture here?
Okay, the way it started, actually, was with all channel, which is the billboard signs. They were the biggest predicators on putting electronic signs up. And we didn't enhance that. We, we left it alone. We didn't want to do it in the county. But the regular signs, like your premise signs, like Walgreens, CVS, Dollar Park has If you go down to, you know, with that, they had, we said they can do those. We couldn't do the billboard signs. That was left up to DOD, for one thing. They regulate the highways. We don't. And the federal government also does, on certain highways. If you go to Dover, which is the state capital, 13, they got them down there. Dover Downs has one. It rolls all day long. Tell you how much money you can spend. You got them at Target down there, and you got them at gas stations down there. And you also have them at different establishments. They have them in Newark, and they also have them in the city of Wilmington. We didn't establish that. We had it to where you have them every 12 hours, and that was it.
A follow-up of mine. Is, is there an arm of the county that's actually forcing this?
Nobody's forcing it. I just looked at it, and I just thought it was outdated, and I saw that we have to keep sending code officers out. And by sending code officers out, we're taking them away from something else. One particular code officer, just in my district, I have like four of them, but one particular code officer has at least 100 calls a week. Not on signs, but on different things. But, so if you have, take them away, it's just like a police officer, you take them away from one thing for something, you know, less, they have to take care of the bigger things.
So then, my final question is this. If, if the logic behind establishing this regulation has changed dramatically over time, and there is no arm of the county, I take from your comments, it's not a good use of county resources to have someone out there trying to enforce this. Is, is it important that we have the regulation at all?
Either that or get rid of the signs.
Well, but then therein lies my question. I mean, is the, is the correct action to reduce it down to a 15-minute requirement, or is it to just get rid of it altogether?
Get rid of the, get rid of the whole thing?
Well, get rid of it as it relates to situations much like it is for the First Unitarian Church. I mean, is there, is there a rational reason why we're trying to regulate this?
Yeah, so they won't scroll. They won't have, they won't have like characters on it where they, they would have like a movie theater, you know, on the outside.
Which we consider to be a traffic hazard.
Correct. And DOD right now says 15 minutes won't bother the traffic.
Mr. Wilson?
Let me join the Corps, Councilman. Thank you for coming.
Let's give you a microphone first.
Similar to Mr. Shepherd, I was interested in length of time. Unfortunately, I was here when we, we originally didn't want to have those signs, and we kind of limited them to 12 hours, et cetera. We're just scrolling and so on. But quite frankly, you know, this is the second or third change we've had in my short time. I'm wondering why we can't just go ahead and go down to one minute, or three minutes, or something. I understand not wanting to scroll. Personally, I don't care for the signs at all, but it's like, like the horses out of the water, so we've got them. So we, can we just go down to a minute, two minutes? If you're whizzing by, it either changes while you happen to be going by, or it doesn't in that period of time. I don't think, personally, I don't think there's any sacrifice about 15 minutes. The other thing that concerns me greatly is many of these signs are installed and paid for by local businesses who employ residents of Newcastle County, who live in Newcastle County, who pay taxes in Newcastle County, and we're going to restrict them, argumentally, to 15 minutes. But Clear Channel, whose headquarters is San Antonio, Texas, pays little or no taxes in Newcastle County, or with the state of Delaware, gets the change at every 10 seconds. I think it's time that corporate America state in San Antonio, Texas, which are signed, if we're not going to let mom and pop businesses have a similar treatment.
I agree.
So I would sincerely suggest that the time be reduced even further, once and for all. I understand those scrolling, I understand those characters, support that 100%. Let me, let's just go ahead and make it a minute, or 10 minutes, or three minutes, at both, and do away with it. Then enforcement won't be an issue then because the pork inspector, and I agree with you, they're not getting inspected or cited now, but there's just no time. The county administration, in general, doesn't have the will or the manpower to enforce it now. I mean, it can only be so. You and I both know where they flash and where they scroll to, if you're looking fast. At any rate, can we just go ahead and reduce it down once and for all, and make the levels, the plans feel a little more level with the citizens that employ people in Newcastle County, the sub-shops, the gas stations, the auto parts places, and make it more realistic without scrolling and without the characters, sir?
Right. Mr. Wilson, I'd love to do that. Originally, when I first went to our lawyer, our county, our council to council, I asked for five minutes, and she talked me into 15. Because of different situations, and she looked up the dollar code and everything before we actually finalized on it. But I wanted it five minutes, and she said, let's go to 15. So that's where, that's where I was at with that.
Bye, Chris, Councilman.
Other questions from the board? Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to point out that these signs are very distracting to drivers. I'm very much against them altogether. Who besides a gas station needs to change it at all? I mean, I can see changing the sign, the price of the gas, but a sub-shop, why do they need to change their sign? Let's be realistic here. If it's changing all the time, if it's flashing, drivers are going to be looking, trying to read it. That's very dangerous. And many of these signs, the letters are so small, you can't read them anyway unless you really try to study them. I personally am against changing this.
Well, ma'am, it's not going to be flashing, and they're not going to be scrolling. It's going to be every 15 minutes.
But how many, they need to change? I mean, how many? I understand the gas station, that makes sense to me, but the other...
Yeah, but they're not exempt.
No, but couldn't they be exempt?
Why?
Because they're the only ones where it makes sense.
Well, you got, you got, most of your gas stations, they're not, they're not established here. It's just like Mr. Wilson said, they're out, they're out of Texas, or out of someplace else. And the money's not being paid here. The only thing they're paying is real state tax.
Well, that's not our concern right at the moment. It's the signs and how they're being changed for the people that live here and drive on our roads. I just think it needs more thought. I really do.
Thank you.
Ms. Vardis?
Yeah, I have two questions. One is right up there on that picture. That flashing sign at the hand, right away, that's flashing. If I'm right, it comes up with second numbers to flash, how long you have.
Right.
So that is a flashing sign.
Right. That's state.
But the state has different rules. I mean, with the DOD, whatever, whatever that is. Okay. The other thing is, I understand, for instance, like restaurants, maybe they want to have a breakfast, lunch, and dinner special. Okay, so right away, that's against your 12 hour. So what I'm thinking is, is you can't go to zero, but the lowest you can go is probably a good thing.
Pardon me?
The lowest you can go is probably a good thing, like the others have said. You know, you said the lady said 15 minutes. Maybe she has a very good reason for that. I don't know. There are reasons to have, you know, again, the signs can be very annoying, but, you know, the most obvious annoying ones to me are those flashing hands when I'm driving down the road.
Except when you're crossing.
Mr. Malenchy?
I'm not taking the position, I just want to just think out loud a little bit, though. I think the question maybe is, does the 12-hour restriction actually potentially suppress the number of these signs? And could we have a different consequence by the fact that you increase the frequency? I'm not really asking a question, but it depends on the desire of the signs, I think, overall in the community. I think we're really kind of getting down to, at some level. That's what I would just kind of throw out there. Not necessarily a question, but, you know, the more frequent they can change, the more prolific they will likely be. That could be good or bad, I'm just saying.
And let me point out, some of these details may come out in Mr. Berry's presentation when he comes up at the council. So some of the finer details of that issue. Mr. Shepherd, one more comment?
Yeah, and not to be repetitive, but it goes, once again, to the, to the point that Mr. Wilson made earlier, and also with respect to issues of enforcement, and your comments previously about whether or not we actually have county code enforcement officers that really have the time to enforce all of this. I'm not saying that our inability to enforce it doesn't mean that we should have something in place. But understanding what the standards are right now, I know from where that church is located, if you go down the road a quarter mile, a mile, a half a mile at most, near the Pep Boys is a law firm that has an office that has a clock.
Right.
And changes time and temperature, both Fahrenheit and Celsius, like every 30 seconds. So there seems to be some inconsistency in the extent to which the standards apply. So I think if we're going to look at changing the time, it's fine, but we also have to ask for uniforming, how it's applied to all of these businesses.
Don't disagree.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, McConville.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, my name's Ken Berry, Planning, Land Use, Newcastle County. I think generally answered some of your questions, I think I can answer a few more. What you're saying here, obviously, is a church that can use these signs. The churches may or may not be on commercial property, but it should be known that you don't need commercial property if you have a permitted use on the property. One of the things I want to point out is, the only change in this particular ordinance is a series of about six words, with the exception of off-premise signs, billboards, that's the other term that a lot of people throw back and forth. Billboards, by the way, are not mentioned in the county code. They're called off-premise signs. The message displayed on the EVMs shall remain fixed for a minimum. It has been 12 hours, and they're suggesting now 15 minutes. The second sentence there, off-premises signs or billboards shall remain fixed for a minimum of 10 seconds. Billboards that you see today that are allowed to flash or change message can only be on I-95, I-495, I-295, and a short section of Route 13, I believe it's between the city of Wilmington and the Route 40 split. Or I think it's from 273. It's from the 273 intersection and the Route 40 split. They're the only places in the county where off-premises signs or billboards can be, electronic, electronic signs of those can be, can be located. So that's the only change in this particular, in this particular ordinance. Definition of an EVM is sign or portion thereof where the message copy includes characters, letters, illustrations. It can be changed or rearranged electronically without touching, physically altering the primary surface of the sign. Message copy can be changed in the field from a remote location. Pretty obvious, but that's our definition in the code today. The standards for onsite, that may remember, the 12 hours to 15 minutes is for onsite EVM signs only. They can be substituted in lieu of any permitted sign. Portable EVMs are prohibited, although the state has many of them up as a, for pedestrian crossings and construction sites and all that. The EVMs is limited to 50 square feet of sign area. BOA can grant variances to that. No EVM sign is allowed within 75 feet of a residential use. So if you have a school, you have a church, you have a college, you have any of these that use an EVMs in place of a permitted sign, if it's within 75 feet of a residential use, it's not permitted. The transition time between messages shall be instantaneous and without special effects, this is in the code today, such as dissolving, spinning, or fading in or out. So you're not allowed to flash or do any of that with your sign. It has to be instantaneous. The EVMs cannot display any message that moves, appears to move, scrolls, or changes in intensity during the fixed display period. It's just a picture up there, and you change it instantly to another piece of information after 12 hours, if you, if you so desire. And written certification that the message shall remain static and shall not flash or scroll at any time is required every time a permit for an EVMs sign is, is made. Without that written certification that says it will remain static, we don't issue the, the permit. The rationale, I was using some of this from the, the whereas clause, is the manual copy signs, which we see around today, they can be changed throughout the day with no time restrictions. Businesses, schools, churches that have manual copy signs, they can change their message throughout the day. If you have an EVMs sign, you're limited to one message per day for all practical purposes. Local businesses, therefore, per the whereas clause, may benefit by providing multiple information to customers and the public throughout the, throughout the, throughout the day. Ms. Vardis noted that, you know, a restaurant, for instance, could show its breakfast and dinner specials at different times. So, and the 15-minute limitation does not, should not adversely impact the motoring public. The whole idea between the 12 hours was to be on a very conservative mode back in '08, that's when that was established. And 15 minutes, you're never going to sit a light, hopefully, for that long a time. So you're going to see a different message possibly on your way home from work, or whatever, but you're not going to necessarily see it change more than once while you're going by. And as I noted, the 12-hour limitation was an excess of caution. That's today outdated, since others can make those, those sign changes are more easily done. Here's a couple of instances where you have your manual copy. You can see them, churches have them, the restaurant has it, John Dickinson High School, schools have them, and shopping centers have them. So there's a lot of the manual copy signs that are out there. They're allowed to change those signs on a, as often as they want to get up on the ladder and make the changes. I'm just going real quick, you're going to see, here's a diner, they have a breakfast WISFIS offers different loans for student loans, housing loans, et cetera. They change that message if they're allowed once, once a day, or they could change it more often. Obviously, gas stations was an issue. Time and temperature, this is one, I guess it might be on the Conker Pike. The county code is always allowed time and temperature to, to scroll constantly. There's never been a time limit on changing the time, changing the temperature, or in some cases, date, you'll see on some of these. So that's, that's always been an exception to the electronic variable message. Another one with offering a temperature there, now I suspect, uh-oh. I suspect that temperature and time could change, but the hot coffee and waffles cannot change but once every 12 hours. Offices use these signs. This is Limestone Road, medical, shopping centers. The Sun was on that particular EVMs, making it very difficult to see. Car dealer, they'll use them. Churches will use them, as we know. Again, retail... Again, retail stores, another retail, Goldie Beak and College uses it, Skyline Middle School has them, and the fire company has them. Just off-premise signs, just for instance, they are not part of this particular change that's being reviewed tonight. They're only permitted, like I said, on I-95, II-95, and IV-95, and on 13. EVMS cannot be located within 2,500 feet of another EVMS off-premise sign. They cannot be double stacked. They cannot display sequential messages, even though they can change every eight seconds. Sign manufacturer has to certify the light intensity not to exceed these numbers for high and a low in daylight and at nighttime. Anytime a new EVMS is permitted, it shall cause the removal of one existing status off-premise advertising sign. So when we get a billboard for this, we require them to show us that they are removing another billboard out there. They require written certification also, that the message remains static and cannot scroll, and there can be no changes, there are no changes to off-premises signs proposed by this amendment. There's a double stack, it's not an EVMS, but that's, they would not be permitted to do two EVMS signs on that particular sign. These are the two in Pennsylvania, that was at 2:00, and five seconds later, that was there. So that's on 202 in Pennsylvania. They're the types of signs that we see out there. That's all I have.
Okay.
Answer any questions in addition to what Mr. Reddum might have had.
Questions from the board? Board, Ms. Vissvaris?
Just a matter of clarification, when they talk about these signs, are they, what about signs in windows?
Signs in windows are not regulated.
They're not regulated, okay, that's my question then.
If they're in the inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing and seeing none, thank you. Before we proceed to public comment, I was curious how many members of the public will be coming up writing commentary tonight? Okay. So this holds true for those who are providing comment in favor, in opposition, and general comments, want to make sure that your commentary is unique and distinctive and different than the prior commentary, that we're not repeating the same arguments, and that it is germane to the amendment. So I would request, and please try to honor the idea of keeping things on track with what the amendment is trying to convey here. Okay? So with that said, those in favor? Hearing and seeing none, those opposed? And if you could, because there appears to be a number, we can line up and get you signed in, and you can come straight up to the front. Thank you. Just state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Dan Zizen, I'm president of the Kennet Pike Association. This is a big deal. I know we can categorize this as a simple amendment going from 12 hours to 15 minutes, but if you've done your homework at all, or if you go to the internet and start looking at what's going on around this country with electronic signs, there is an explosion going on. And I would just urge this group, as you approach the idea of liberalizing the use of electronic changeable signs, that you do so with the abundance of caution. Just to give you an example, the state of Alaska, the state of Hawaii, the state of Maine, the state of Montana, the state of Vermont have banned electronic billboards. And they've done so because there are unanswered questions about driver safety and distractions. Don't forget, signs, electronic signs are designed to distract drivers. They are designed to have you take your eyes off the road and look at the sign, and they work. They're very effective at doing that. In addition to these states, every major city in the state of Texas has banned electronic billboards. Amarillo, Austin, Dallas, El Paso, three other states have put a moratorium on electronic billboards. And the country of Sweden, having approved an ordinance that allows electronic billboards, has relooked at the research of driver safety, and not only have they stopped issuing permits for these, but they have requested that all the existing ones be removed. So please, with an abundance of caution, please move carefully on this issue. I had to laugh when I read the ordinance, whereas the fourth whereas, whereas motorists generally only have a few seconds, or at best, a few minutes to see and comprehend the sign. For goodness sakes, I hope drivers are not looking at these signs for a few minutes to comprehend what they are, but it gets to the point and the concerns that are out there. There are a lot of unanswered questions out there, and most municipalities, most states are moving with great caution in this area. Article after article, electronic billboards in the U.S., profit is the main motivator of growth. I think you already said that. The four biggest billboard, electronic billboard owners in this country have collective revenue of $12.5 billion, and not one of them's in the state of Delaware, one of them's a French company. Digital billboards dangerously distracting to drivers, says new study. The Arizona Supreme Court ruled earlier this week to uphold a lower court's decision banning electronic billboards in the state of Arizona. I don't think you have enough information to start liberalizing this ordinance, and I would make a plea to please proceed with an abundance of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Chair? Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Dan Zizen, you continue to reference billboards.
I do.
Do you know what size they're referring to when you're saying billboards?
I'm not sure what the size is, but I know these are mainly about billboards, but the same questions, the same concerns about driver safety and visual pollution applies to any size electronic signs. I don't know the formal definition.
Just trying to get a clarification.
I think generally, these states are banning the larger billboard signs. The city of Philadelphia just banned them as well, about four months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call the tall guy? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for hearing us out. My name is Gerald Baker, I live on 1110 Branton Road in North Wilmington. I'm here on behalf of myself and as the Civic Association President for the neighborhood of Chatham. It's a neighborhood of 235 homes in North Wilmington. Based on what we have heard about the potential change and alteration, we do not support any adjustments to the existing ordinance or regulation for these EVMS signs. Some of the reasons get to, I think, some of the concerns with the signs today as they exist, some of the code enforcement challenges that are out there, this adjustment does not address. It merely adjusts the duration of time that signage is allowed to remain static. So I think my, our concern is that if we're having trouble enforcing a code or enforcing a 12-hour rule, simply kind of, you know, moving the target closer to where people are tending to adjust their signs doesn't really address the problem, it just sort of makes it look like it's more compliant. So I don't think that's really a solution. Other challenges that I think we have is really, if there's already a challenge to enforce, how do we plan on enforcing some of the intricacies of the refresh rate and the, you know, animations versus, you know, a constant, kind of a sign that flips to yet another sign instantaneously? I think there's a concern there, because, you know, once we make an adjustment to time and duration, if we said we've seen concerns of people refreshing them too frequently today, who's to say people don't start getting creative with their transitions, right? A lot of those concerns, in my opinion, as a resident, kind of speak directly to visual pollution. If there was any amendment to reduce the signage and EVMS in Newcastle County, I would vote for that. I think there's, clearly you see where I'm coming from there. And again, if, I believe the gentleman stated that the, I guess, the current set of regulations was proposed, was it eight years ago? Is that correct?
Two thousand and eight.
All right, six years ago, so I mean, that's, it's not a, I mean, things move pretty quickly, that's not a whole lot of time, where will we be in another six years? Is this going to start looking like, you know, Coastal Highway down in Maryland, where it's, you know, things going on like crazy on 202 or on Kirkwood Highway? And again, to me, it's, I do believe these signs are effective, and I'd be concerned that we're starting to go down a path and a direction that only adds to visual clutter in our county. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Shepherd?
Sir, given where you say you live, I presume you have occasions to drive on Conker Pike frequently?
Yes.
The signs that are currently present there with the, only that change only every 12 hours, do you find them, as a driver yourself, distracting in their current operation?
Compared to what? So if they're, to me, they're static for 12 hours.
Right.
So no more distracting than any other sign, I would say? No.
So you're used to them at this point?
Yes.
I ask because it sounds to me, what you're suggesting is, any change in the existing regulation portends a slippery slope, where we'll get more signage on the road and more frequent terms of information thereon. Is that a concern that you have?
There's a concern that it would go in that direction, but my immediate concern is that we're not saying, let's increase the duration, we are saying, let's reduce it. So the reduction of time is my concern. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Others opposed?
My name is Dan Bachover, and I'm here this evening as a concerned citizen. I'm also here as a member of the county's sign committee, though I must confess, it's been a little while since we had a meeting. And incidentally, I'm also a member, former member, former president of CCOBEH, the Council of Civic Organizations of Brandy 100, and also a former president of the Civic League for Newcastle County. And thank you for allowing me to offer these words of opposition, sorry about that, Joe, to this proposal for, to allow electronic variable message changes every 15 minutes. I liken this to opening a crack to Pandora's Box of signs. We have a sign code that's working reasonably well now, thanks to a board of adjustment that makes sure we have a level playing field. But think about it. Consider who's always trying to pop the lid off, this Pandora's Box of signs, and who profits when these new signs jump out of the box? We have businesses who compete with each other for ever bigger and brighter signs, and with the creative assistance of the sign companies employing ever newer and more visual techniques, they're ever more successful in capturing the attention of passing motorists. Proof of this is the robust health of the sign committees, the sign companies, and their willingness of the businesses to spend more for these signs. This is no time to cave in to self-serving pleas for code changes without opportunity for more careful evaluation of all the factors that will be affected. Recall the difficulty of putting contents back into Pandora's Box. Envision the challenge of restoring our code sign back to its current acceptability. On that Pandora's Box, we do have an opportunity to peek inside before flinging it open and suffering the ill-advised consequences. Our request is that you not approve variable signs tonight. Give our civic organizations ample time for a meaningful review. Passage of an amended ordinance will be a billboard of your action, for all to see and reflect upon, not just tomorrow, but for many tomorrows to come.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Others opposed?
Hello again, Mark Blake from GATA, and I'm also the vice president of the Civic League, so I'm the bridesmaid this year on both of those groups. One of the things that concerns the civic groups is the terms that exist in the present ordinance that weren't changed with this tonight, may versus shall. When it says the amber alerts may be employed by these signs rather than shall, that basically lets off the sign companies from having to spend the additional funds that are needed to integrate that into our emergency broadcast systems. There's only one right now doing that on the I-95 corridor. I actually have been working on an EVMS out in Hoakessin, a permit was issued, they were going to build this nice lovely 16-foot tall pylon with a four-by-eight-foot message sign, and we're trying to keep monuments down for the simple reason of distraction and so forth, and they actually brought up, they said, well, we're going to put in the amber alert. When you talk to the companies, that's one of the things that we shall request of them, because they're willing to do it, and it's a significant cost, but Walgreens, CVS, Rite Ed, all the pharmacies, and all the major chains will do it. Unfortunately, our code only says may. That's one of the things that we all think should and shall change, we'd hope would be changed in there, that they would do that. That right there is the biggest reason to have these emergency signs, the availability of that. The fire halls would do it, too. We know the Hoakessin Fire Company is going to be requesting one themselves in the coming months. The other thing is, there's no auto dimming on the message signs, only the billboards on these large corridors. There was one of the signs that was shown up here, Mr. Berry showed, it happened to be the limestone down by the Buffalo Wild Wings. It actually has that in there. If you go there at dusk to evening, the sign will stay bright for about five to six minutes at the change of dusk to twilight into darkness, and then it will dim. It's one of the only ones in the county that does that. The rest of them, they have to program it in to do it. This has an auto dimming feature in it, which is very nice. Again, that's something that's missing in this code, and if you don't think it's bright, I was sending it the NTB, which is two parcels away, and it was blinding so much, I couldn't see my smartphone to figure out my next appointment. It's just very glaring, and that's another issue. And the thing I sort of found disingenuous tonight was code enforcement's out. They're out every day, and I hate to say this, but it's akin to, if you think the code enforcement guys are only going out to check tall grass in the disabled vehicle, they have a duty, a sworn duty, if they see a violation, to take action and report it. And to give you a great example, we have a lot of requests for the county police to go into neighborhoods to do speed patrols, and the neighbors all think, well, that's great, they're going to catch those rotten scoundrels that are speeding through the neighborhood, endangering our lives, and then someone gets caught for an expired tag, and they go, but we hired them to do speed patrol. That's their job. If you're breaking the law, if somebody's robbing a bank, they do something. So code enforcement's out there, and they will get these and enforce them. So don't think that's not happening. That's what we pay our taxes for. The last thing is, Mr. Dan Zizen noted Maine and Vermont, I grew up in that area, I grew up in Vermont, they also have no billboards in both states. And the ironic thing is, their business is still doing well. There's a country, a town in Columbia, actually a large city, they just outlawed every sign. There's not even signs except for small signs on the doors for the businesses. And there was a program on the other night on the History Channel about that. How's that working out a year later? They said it's much prettier. The businesses are actually getting more word of mouth, their business went up. People are talking, engaging, they're walking, they're seeing the actual thoroughfares and the landscape that was put in, and they said it's prettier. That's the reason Maine and Vermont have done away with all of these, because they are tourism states. And in case you forgot, that's what we are, too. The last thing is that Tom Cruise in the movie Minority Report, as he's walking through the mall, every little ad is popping up, hey, Mr. so-and-so, how are those Gap jeans working out for what you bought last week? Don't forget oil change next week. That's what we're going for when we start to have these rapid changing of signs. It's going to be individual targeting. They can do that right now. My truck tonight was telling me I have to go in for an oil change, and they called me to remind me. They're knowing when I have to do things, and it's going to just continue to go that way as we move along. And my last one I give you is the Department of Transportation. Yes, they have reasons for having those signs there to warn us. That's the purpose of the signs they use. That's the purpose of the signs they use. They're to warn you of an imminent danger ahead. Massachusetts actually put one up on I-90, I-190 back in 1984, and it lasted about a year. It actually was there to help reduce the number of accidents on this long stretch of highway on the way to Fort Devens, where a lot of people were speeding. So they put a sign that was, you went over the hill, it would catch your speed, the sign would illuminate, and people rapidly drove off the road. There were 34 fatalities because of that sign. They took it out. Thank you very much. I'm done. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Thank you. Others opposed?
My name is Bill Rowe. I reside at 3917 Heather Drive in Greenville Manor. Signs in general are a real threat to our communities. EVMS, or electronic variable message signs, are at the top of this threat list. Also on the list are internally lighted signs as well as billboards. The EVMS signs are basically an oversized TV screen. They generally have a white background that will light up neighbor's property and distract a driver's attention, which is a real hazard. Yes, these EVMS signs are a distraction to drivers and should only be permitted in certain areas. The signs that you saw here had the little red lights. The newer versions of these signs are like huge TV screens with a white background and darker letters, and at night, it's like a big spotlight up there, distracting drivers. And the signs are located for drivers to see. Our UDC must include these signs, or the county will lose control of their placement. I would recommend that EVMSs be permitted in light industrial areas only, and that they be placed at least 100 feet from the road right-of-way. I'm aware that some local governments do not permit these signs. For example, Sanibel, Florida does not permit EVMS signs or any other type of lighted signs. Locally, I'd like to point out, too, internally lighted signs that I believe are in very poor taste. The foot and ankle sign, which is on Kennet Pike in the Greenville Shopping Center, is one. And the other is the Chestnut Run Credit Union sign, which is located on the Credit Union property. This sign was initially not approved by land use, and then they went to the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment approved this internally lit sign that has multiple colors on it. It's just terrible. Many communities are facing the same issue that Newcastle County is facing. Why, you ask? Because the EVMS industry is spending millions of dollars every year lobbying agencies at all government levels. My recommendation is that we should strengthen the UDC to discourage EVMS sign usage. Please do not weaken the existing code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Thank you. See how many remain on opposition? How many, how many others do we have? Two? Okay. Please.
So as not to repeat some of what's previously said, there are several of us here tonight from the Council of Civic Organizations of Brandy--
I'm sorry. Could you name your firm, please?
I'm sorry. Francis West, Brandywine Hundred, Wilmington, Delaware, 19810.
Thank you.
Several of us are here tonight from Council of Civic Organizations of Brandywine Hundred, an almost 60-year-old organization which has been dedicated to a good development in Brandywine Hundred as well as Newcastle County. Dan Bachover, Vern Lee Frye, and I. Two of us are past offices and presidents, and we speak in opposition to the proposal for all the reasons that you've heard. I would also point out, I've asked in the last two days for statistics from the Delaware Safety Council and the National Safety Council. I was president of that for 20 years. And I was a student in New York City. And if you want to see the effect of these illuminated signs all the time, walk up 42nd Street. Don't drive up 42nd Street because you can only go about two miles an hour. But in fact, these signs are entertainment for some, but danger for others. I am aware, as some of the others have indicated, that so far the statistics, the safety statistics, indicate that you should, we should, in Newcastle County, proceed with a great deal of caution before we permit more. And I would like to know whether or not Newcastle County has a fiscal note attached to this, because if, in fact, this goes up and there are violations, how much will it cost to enforce the limits? I think we need to do more homework, find out what the statistics are, worry about driver safety, and think twice.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Fran Swift. I'm president of GATA. And we've worked on these here variable signs for the past, since 2008. We worked, we were involved in the original design of them. We've helped businesses and developers, as you talked to the vice president there. And we've worked on these signs so that everything, we have no issues with the public itself. But as many signs as we've helped get approved through the county, we've also worked with businesses to get them not approved. Many businesses, sport bars, wanted variable signs to change quite more frequently so they can advertise their products. We even had a topless bar that wanted to put in a variable sign, which luckily we didn't get in Hoakessin. So there's many instances. We know of a store that wanted the variable signs so they could change, advertise their bread products, their eggs, their breads, all the other products. To me, what a variable sign does now, if you lower the limit from the 12 hours, is make it a public texting. What they're doing is asking you to look at their signs while you're driving. And texting does cause accidents. I was a police officer for 21 years. And anything that draws your attention away from your driving will cause an accident.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Thank you. Are there others opposed? For those who have general comments, if you can begin signing in at the desk over here, please.
I'm Jay Harry Feldman from Oak Lane Manor in North Wilmington. I'm standing in front of you, Mr. Chairman and board members, more as a confused citizen than a concerned citizen. I've listened carefully to the arguments in favor of making this change, and I'm confused. I'd like to know, if I were sitting in your seats, how many calls have been actually made to the code office to come out and find out why this particular sign was more than once in 12 hours? It sounds to me like maybe Grotto's Pizza is ratting on the Hollywood Grill or something like that. I mean, who's keeping track of this, really? Who's calling in? Secondly, I've never known a gas station that's changed its prices more than twice a day. That really confuses me. Another thing that I'm curious about is, there must have been reasons for that 12-hour limitation a few years ago. And the sign industry must have agreed to it, and the county council agreed to it, and so forth. Now, what has changed so radically that we now need this other thing, a lesser limit? Another thing that was said was that the federal laws control these large billboards on roads like I-95. Well, I go to the Philadelphia Airport frequently, and if the federal laws control those, they're pretty bad laws because those billboards change. And I know those are billboards and not these little signs, but it just so happens that I'm a member of First Unitarian Church. And believe me, we think long and hard and have a real struggle coming up with the wording that we're allowed to change once every 12 hours, and we often, we don't change it. We change it twice a week. Now, there must be some reasons for this, but I tell you one thing I really do believe in, and that's the law of unintended consequences. And I think if I were sitting in your seats, I'd want to have some answers to these questions. What are the possible unintended consequences of making these changes? Is somebody going to be coming to you next year at this time saying, well, we really need more than 50 square feet? Give us more than 50 square feet, et cetera, et cetera. You get the drift of it. I think there's a lot of questions going on here that need to be answered. Thank you very much. Questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Any others opposed? Those for general comments? Hearing and seeing none, the department provided a vote? No. Mr. Redd? Counselman? Any rebuttal? You don't have to. It's up to you.
Well, I just, a couple of things I heard that I didn't think were real correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The first speaker that got up from KPA said about billboards, and kept expressing billboards. And I also heard about where the message would be on there. There's no message on signs like Walgreens or CVS. Only message that they have is theirs. It can't be shared by somebody else for advertisement. Billboards are completely different than these signs. Billboards are something that are regulated, which Ken Berry got up and stated on 295, 95, 273, and 40, and 495. We're talking about signs that have to do with businesses that advertise their product. That's all this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir. I believe there's no further business there on the agenda. We have a motion from the board to adjourn. Second? Close the paper. Aye. Meeting is adjourned.